All right, well, I think that'll solve that. I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
Finish.
We wanted all here hear us, so thank you. So I was saying, in the center of the site, there's about a five to six foot of fill, and then that comes out to the rear of the lower buildings and down into the pond. And it sort of, there's a slope from roadway down to the rear of the buildings there closest to the roadway. There would be a landscaping buffer planted in that area, as we had discussed previously. Currently updating the landscaping plan. I should have that in time to be reviewed for your next meeting. And lighting plan, similarly, I turned that over to another firm that's preparing the lighting photometric plan.
All right. Is that everything?
I think I've covered the basics. I did want you to see the realignment and, you know, be comfortable that what we're designing encapsulated, you know, we had discussed at the last meeting.
Okay. Questions from the board? John?
Yeah, I have one. When we had toured this site, and you presented the actual unit layouts, you said that there was an issue with egress for the units. Has that been solved yet?
There was a question of egress that the fire department had asked, and, you know, the buildings will be designed in accordance with the building code. If the building code requires a second egress, one will be provided.
Okay. But you guys haven't shown anything?
No, we have not contracted for the design of the buildings at this point.
No questions at this point? I just, on the, you have a temporary construction site entrance that comes across town property? Have we, I know we had discussed in the past whether the DPW, what they wanted done there to, I guess, prevent that from being used as an access to the site after you're done. I guess maybe in the second phase, you might still want that access. I'm just trying to figure out what... I don't really want people driving in there.
When the project's completed?
Well, when first phase one is completed, if there's still an entrance there, somebody could theoretically drive in.
Okay. I think I can address that. Let me just look at my plan for a second.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I did speak to the DPW director, and he said that they just want the site restored back to what it was, just either dirt or grass, something like that. They don't need anything additional, paving or anything like that.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's this nice inviting entrance there that nobody can use. You put some boulders in, temporary obstruction, something to, you know...
I think we can add that to the plan pretty easily, Mr. Chair.
I assume you're going to want to reopen it for phase two.
Right.
And as long as DPW doesn't mind you going across that lot to get in, then I don't have any objection to that, but...
So we did research the status of that area. So that was part of the original layout of Fisher Street. And when the roadway was reconstructed, that part of the property was never made into a parcel or abandoned, so it's still part of the layout of Fisher Street. So that's where our current driveway is. That's why we're showing the construction entrance there. Once the other driveway is brought up to grade, that can be used for access for the units. But I think it would be desirable from a construction point of view, for demolition of the septic and construction of the additional phase, to continue to use that driveway.
Combined with that, I just want some type of temporary obstacle so that people have the, I don't know why anyone would want to drive in there, but people have done stupid...
That's understandable. I think that's something that's pretty easy for us to add.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Barbary has joined us.
Great. Thank you for coming in. If there's no other questions from the board, Jenny, did you have anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
We plan on continuing this to February 20th, once we get comments back from town departments on the revised plans that you submitted, so...
I move that the planning board grant a continuance of the petition for 134 Fisher Street to February 20th, '24, the '24 meeting.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor? That's four to zero in favor of continuing.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to review the proposed zoning amendment to permit multifamily housing to comply with the Commonwealth's multifamily housing requirement for MBTA communities. Since this is a public hearing, I have to read the legal notice of the Town of Westboro into the record. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3A, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM regarding the proposed zoning amendment to permit multifamily housing to comply with the Commonwealth's multifamily housing requirement for MBTA communities. The following article will appear on the warrant for the March 23, 2024, Westboro Springtown meeting. To see if the town will vote to amend the Westboro zoning bylaws to establish a multifamily housing overlay district in compliance with the Commonwealth's multifamily housing requirement for MBTA communities, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, as follows. One, to add to Section 4.0 zoning districts, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning Overlay District, MCMOD. Tell you, that's our acronym.
It's everybody's acronym.
All right. Add to Section 4.2 official zoning map, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning Overlay District, which consists of three overlay sub-districts. The public hearing will be held in the Great Hall of Forbes Municipal Building, 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass. Please see the calendar on the Town of Westboro homepage. Posted 48 hours prior to the public hearing for additional information. To access the proposal and any submitted documents, please go to our website at www.wespurromass.gov/1038zoningamendmentmbtacommunities. Documents are also available for review in the Westboro Planning Board office at 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass. During regularly business hours, persons unable to attend may submit comments in writing to the Westboro Planning Board in advance of the public hearing, or attend the public hearing as indicated above. I don't have the dates. Do I need to announce the dates that that was in the community advocate?
No.
Okay, I just traditionally always announce the dates, so... Why ask the question? So, all right. Jenny, if you want to go ahead and start your presentation?
Yes, definitely.
Pull the microphone a little closer. Is that on?
This one's not on. All sorts of things in this room today.
I can hear you fine, but I want to make sure the people at home watching.
Right, right. So I'm going to be talking to you about the MBTA Communities Act and the zoning article that's included in your packet, and was also distributed through the website. And there's also a map in your packet, which shows the proposed overlay districts and how they will be added to the zoning map. And so for the public, what is an MBTA community? It's defined in Section 1 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 161A. And there's 177 total that are subject to requirements in the zoning act. And Westboro is one of them. So the reason that the state came out with the requirements for multifamily housing under the zoning act is because, as we all know, there's a lack of zoning for multifamily housing in Massachusetts. And by allowing it near transit, we can create new housing that's in walkable neighborhoods, closer to transit. So that means people are closer to places that they work, that they can go to school, restaurants, things like that. And as you know, we do have a transit-oriented village overlay district right now, so we do have something very similar that allows multifamily by a special permit. So for Westboro, we are doing this because none of our existing zoning districts meet the state's new requirements under 3A. So we have to propose new zoning districts. We have a few opportunities by special permit to build multifamily housing, but under this proposed bylaw, it would be by right. It would not be through a special permit. However, it would still need to go through a site plan review with the planning board. If we do not comply with this, then we become ineligible for state grant programs such as Housing Choice Community Grants, Mass. Works Infrastructure Grants, and then other local capital projects funds. And that would be a tremendous loss to Westboro. We receive many grants under Mass. Works and the Housing Choice Community Grants. For example, we're working on the downtown development plan through a consultant right now, and that's a Housing Choice grant. And we have multiple Mass. Works grants that we've received for different projects. In addition, they've advised that the determinations of compliance will inform the other state agencies when they're evaluating applications for discretionary grant programs, which we have also received other grants through, such as Mass. Trails. And noncompliant communities have lost some of their housing authority funding. Attorney, the Attorney General is saying that this law is not optional, so it's pretty serious that we need to comply. And we have until December of 2024 to do so. So we went through a study or an analysis with a consultant, RKG Associates, after doing some work ourselves, looking at the different areas that we can have the overlay districts. And because we're classified as a commuter rail and based on the number of housing units in the 2020 census, we have some minimum requirements that we have to adhere to in looking at the zoning. So the districts have to have at least 50 acres in size with 50% of the total acreage comprising of contiguous land. At least 20% of the district acreage must be located within the half-mile transit station area. And then no single district can be smaller than five acres. So based on those parameters, we had to figure out where we could put these districts so that we can comply with that. And we came up with three areas. The first area is on Gleason Street, and it's where Westboro Village currently is and another lot that is adjacent to it. These parcels are already in the transit-oriented village overlay district, so they, actually, one of the projects on a parcel there had a special permit through the planning board for multifamily under the TOV, the Transit-Oriented Village. And the other parcels have the opportunity also. District 2 is on Turnpike Road, and it's where Park Westboro currently is, another multifamily development that was approved under a comprehensive 40B permit. And then the third parcel is currently where Arrive Westboro is. It's another multifamily building, and that is in the Highway Business zoning district, where multifamily is also allowed by special permit. So after doing the calculations on the lot... So after doing the calculations on the lot areas and the sizes of the sub-districts and taking a look at our existing zoning, we wanted to be able to mirror what we already allow while still complying with the requirements of the state. So the lot sizes are the same as what's currently under our zoning in those districts I described. The building height is maxed at four stories. The open space requirement is still 40%. The setbacks are the same, the parking's the same. You will notice that the dwelling units per acre is different, but those numbers reflect the developments that are already on those sites. This is more about the modeling results and summary to show that we do comply. You'll see in the second column, the requirements based on the district acreage, the acreage within the transit area that I talked about, unit capacity, and the dwelling units per acre. So you can see that the totals average out to us complying with the state's requirements. For the impact on Westboro, we really don't anticipate much of an impact because we already have existing units on those, all of those sub-districts, Westboro Village, Park Westboro, and Arrive. And all of those units will count towards the requirements from the state. So we're anticipating minimal to no impact on the current housing. And then in looking at this and looking at other zoning opportunities, we're continuing to explore what our options are for housing and ways to diversify our housing stock through the zoning bylaw. Proposed timeline, the zoning article has been submitted for the town meeting warrant. I'll be doing a presentation to the select board next week. We have our planning board hearing right now, and then it's anticipated that this will be on the March annual town meeting warrant. And the reason for that timing is because we want to make sure that we have time in case changes needed to be made before the deadline of December of 2024. This, if it is approved at town meeting, it still has to go to the Attorney General for a review, and the Attorney General has the possibility for coming back with comments. And they have 90 days to review the bylaw. So I will take questions now, and I can actually bring up a copy of the zoning article, and we can go through it if you wish.
So if it goes to town meeting, gets approved, and then the AG comes back with changes that need to be made, do we have to have a special town meeting?
Get that back in time for the fall, right?
We should be able to bring it back to the fall if the changes are significant enough.
I actually just saw an offer, an offer from somebody at the AG's office to do a preliminary review.
I did. I sent it to her.
Okay.
Oh, you did, right?
So she's gonna, you know, yeah, I mean, obviously she can't give us any definitive ruling on that, but she's gonna look it over.
It also has been sent to EO HLC for review in the preliminary package. Unfortunately, they say to let them have 90 days to review it, and we don't, when I submitted it in January, the beginning of January, it wasn't 90 days until town meeting, it was just under. So I did reach out to them and explain the timing, and they said that they would do their best to get it back to me.
Yeah, we're in an early town meeting too, so hopefully they'll accommodate that. But I do think we'll have time to come back in the fall. I mean, we, we did have a consultant look at this pretty closely, so I'm pretty sure we're in compliance with this.
I just worry, I know how this, we all know how the state works.
That's one of the reasons we brought it. That's one of the reasons we brought it to the Springtown meeting, just so, you know, with the idea that.
You're not up against it?
Well, we don't want to, I mean, I'm the last minute guy on everything anyway. Wouldn't bother me at all.
Well, we also don't want to lose out on opportunities for the grant programs. You know, if, for, if worst-case scenario doesn't pass this town meeting and we bring it to next town meeting, and, you know, there's things that we need to change again, then we would lose out on those grant opportunities because it expired, well, the deadline is December of 2024, and I don't think they're interested in extending it.
So what, a little naive to it, but what have we done so far to kind of spread the word on this article and get it out there? Because if people are somehow against it, and if this is the part of the presentation, like, can we go by not doing it, how it will hurt the community and not receive the grants?
People are against it?
If they are, hypothetically.
We, well, we did have a.
Assuming everyone gets it, but.
We did have a public meeting, information meeting that was, did have some people there, not a lot.
I just worry that gets on the town floor.
Yeah.
Next thing, everyone, no one understands it.
We also did a show on Westboro TV, 01581 Show, last week, that I think a lot of people do watch that. Jenny will be doing a presentation to the select board on.
I'll be doing the presentation next week to the select board, and it's also been shared on the town's social media website. Well, this meeting, we sent notifications to all the abutters around these sub-districts within 300 feet. So there has been a lot of outreach, but I know what you're, you're saying, it always happens.
Is this, is this what, you just went through the presentation?
Yes.
So I just, my suggestion is that maybe put something in there about, if it's overkill, just let, let me know, but put something in there saying, over the past 10 years, we've received X amount from the state in, in grants. And if gone to improve X, Y, and Z without getting this passed, this is, we won't see that.
So we're dealing.
I can tell you, the Otis Street alone, we've gotten, I think, four million, is that right?
But I don't think anyone knows that.
So my problem with that, because we're doing the same thing in Hopkinton, is the past funding doesn't necessarily translate to what this is going to impact, because we're not going to get that funding again. So one of the strategies we're going to try and use, and I would, I think it would work here, is look at the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan and say, here are the things we want to do in the next 10 years that we're not going to be able to do if we don't pass this. And, I mean, we can have, this is how much we've gotten, so like, there's a trend of actually getting funding, but looking forward, I think might have more of a, these are the things we want to do.
Well, I mean, we can certainly talk about, though, the Mass Works grants that we've gotten, the.
Yeah, absolutely.
The community one-stop grant, or the planning grant that we just got for downtown. None of that, we wouldn't have been eligible for any of that. So I think, you know, we can talk about.
I think that needs to be put in.
When people talk about the B-Walt, right? Like, I don't want the town to spend money on that, I want that to be funded through grants.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't get any, we wouldn't be able to do any of them if we don't pass this.
I think that needs to be put into the presentation, whether it's the select board or at town meeting, so people.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think.
I do have something in there, but I will, I can make it more of a focal point.
But I think also people, one thing we need to stress, and I certainly plan on making this clear, if it's not clear in the presentation, is that we're, this is really a no-impact strategy.
Yeah.
You know, there's existing multifamilies, the worst case, they could tear down Arrive and build a new one, but it would only be four stories.
Yeah.
And it would, and it would have affordable housing where it doesn't have any right now, so.
So, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would just stress that, that there's not going to be an impact to the community based on the strategy that they were putting in front of the community. And I think that's the main selling point, is the non-impact at this point.
Well, I do think the grant issue is a big factor.
Sure, of course, definitely.
So I get what you're saying with no impact, but the point of this whole thing is to create housing, because housing is expensive and unavailable for a lot of people. So when we say no impact, it's not impacting the people who already have housing in town, but it's going to impact the people who don't have housing or who are looking to get housing or the housing is too expensive, because it's not really going to generate new housing units.
So, John, I have a whole litany of responses to that. First of all, the town, this town was way ahead of its time in the transit village zoning, given an award by the state for looking forward to multifamily housing in a transit zone. Second of all, we've put billions of dollars into our affordable housing trust, so the town has been very supportive of affordable housing. We've rezoned all of our residential zones to require 20% affordable, and we have highway business, we have the D-Pod, where you're allowed to do multifamily zoning. The only difference is that it's special permit.
I get it. I'm not saying.
So I think.
I'm not saying Westboro is not providing the housing that other towns are. We're, we're doing our fair share to some extent, and I'm not necessarily saying the affordable housing is what we're lacking. It's the housing, the, the middle-income housing, the, the missing middle, as we call it, right?
Yeah, I agree.
And so it's the attainable housing for people who are trying to move into Westboro, who live in Westboro, maybe live in an apartment and are looking for a house.
But my argument to that is, I don't think it's the zoning that's holding that back. I think it's the sewer.
Potentially, potentially.
I mean, I think the D-Pod zoning is incredibly flexible. I think the highway business zoning is.
I'm not saying that this is not a decent strategy to move forward with, because it's, I have my own problems with MBTA communities and how the state laid it out. But just to say that there's no impact, I think is a little disingenuous, because you're looking at who you're not impacting. And so there are people who, in the community, who might be impacted by not having additional housing opportunities provided. And so if you say, if you say that, I'm going to push back against the no impact, because you're not impacting the people who currently own homes.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that, John, and I think in there we do say minimal impact, but I can change the wording to make it more clear that minimal impact for new development. I did also put in there that the planning department is working on other strategies to diversify our housing stock, which we are, we're taking a look at the Highway Business zoning district, for example, and trying to figure out a way how we can.
We're also.
Take a look at multifamily to see how, ways that we can promote more diverse housing.
And we're also getting a housing production plan done, so.
I'm not, I'm not saying we're not doing our part, I'm just saying, if we're going to present this as no impact, we have to recognize that it is impacting people that we're not.
I think it's a great point, John, and I don't, I, I guess, I think Jenny's point about minimal impact on our ability as a zoning, as a special permit granting authority to, to have a say about the makeup of future housing projects. Because, you know, I prefer special permit authority on these. You know, that's one of my issues, that's one of my issues with the MBTA Communities Act. So, again, I not trying to, I'm a firm proponent of additional housing. I'm not trying to forego that, I just think it needs to be done thoughtfully, and I'm not sure I want the town to give up control of our zoning through.
If I may, I'd just like to go through the zoning article so that you can, the public and the board can see the draft. So obviously, we're amending to add the district, it's the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD, which is the state's recommendation. I'm sure we'll come up with a better acronym at some point. So we go through the purpose, the scope and authority, describing the sub-districts, the applicability, and then the underlying zoning. So the underlying zoning, I know you all understand this, but for the public, that will still be in place. This is just another layer on top of it. It's an option, just like the Transit Orient Village is an option in the industrial zone. And these definitions, there's these references within the bylaw draft, and these also come from the state's guidance. So the use is permitted as of right, it's multifamily housing, and you can also do a mixed-use development. However, in line with what our current Transit Orient Village requires, no mixed-use development can have industrial uses in the same building or on the same lot. Anything would have to go through site plan review, meaning a full public hearing in front of the planning board. So the use is allowed, it's, it's not a discretionary permit in that way, but the planning board would be looking at condition, conditions on the approval in terms of looking at traffic, infrastructure, greenery, landscaping, things like that. Here's the table of dimensional standards that I referenced before, and so these requirements would only apply to those three sub-districts. There is an exception here on the dimensional requirements. They, the, the granting authority, the site plan review authority can waive the height and setbacks in the dimensional standards if it's accommodating solar, eco roofs, energy storage, or, or other renewable energy installations. For the parking requirements, this is in line with our current zoning, two spaces per unit. And then one thing that the, the state actually recommended is adding in bicycle parking spaces, which I do think is a really good idea. It's a half a space per unit, or for mixed-use, two spaces per 5,000 square feet, and that's also coming from recommendations. And there's also general development standards included in here for the site design, just making sure that the roadways and pedestrian access are, conform to the standards of the town subdivision regulations, and that the parking areas, transportation centers are adequate. It also says that the planning board can require construction of onsite or offsite sidewalks, footpaths, or bicycle paths in order to access the site. And then the next areas talk about what the standards are, if you want to put a multiple buildings on one lot, and how they need to be oriented. And then also the same for mixed-use development, the different requirements for that. And then there is a development standard in here that multifamily housing and the mixed-use development needs to have a common outdoor space that all residents can access. And then here, talking about the principal facade and the parking, how it needs to be subordinate in design and location, so that you don't necessarily have a parking lot in front of the development, it can be to the side or to the rear, essentially making it more pedestrian-friendly. And then if the applicant requests, the site plan review authority can give waivers to those items. The affordability requirement, this is in line with our current zoning, it's a 20% affordability requirement. And I will mention that we did an economic feasibility analysis through our consultant where they had, and this was a state, the state's requirement also, they had to look at whether we can ask for that much of a percentage of affordable housing as opposed to asking for 10%. And they found that we can, based on the economic feasibility. However, we cannot go over a four-story requirement, because then it turns into steel frame construction, which is much more expensive, where under four stories is a stick build. So that's where the, the numbers matter for that.
I'm seeing that a lot of developments that have 20% affordable can't even make it at 20.
Hmm. Yeah.
Just, they're just having trouble pensuring out.
Yeah, we, I have heard that that can be difficult. If you haven't already, the economic feasibility analysis is on the website, and it does show the costs of different projects in town and breaks it down. It's really interesting, but that is an important consideration. Uh, let's see here. The development standards for the affordable units, essentially they have to be integrated with the rest of the development, which I know this board has added conditions recently to make sure that that happens, and that they need to be, you know, issued occupancy permits simultaneous to the market rate units. And that they need to be, you know, issued occupancy permits simultaneous to the market rate units. Then really just the end is the zoning enforcement officer is responsible for administering enforcing, like they are every bylaw, is the end. Anybody have any questions on it?
So we've sent this to the AG's office for review?
Yes.
And to HLC for review?
Yes. And the AG's office, I did tell her that we have town meeting in March. And so she's trying to expedite her review.
So what are the, what are the numbers for the criteria? The gross density, max unit, or minimum units, or?
Yeah.
Unit capacity, sorry, and the acreage?
So we're required 1,250 units.
How much are we like modeling for?
Oh, okay.
1,572.
1,572.
That's what the capacity of those districts would be if they were fully built out.
But those units, the units there do count towards that. And we have, I believe it's, I wanna say 1,100. I don't have the exact number, but it's pretty, it's pretty close.
So if you look at, let's say, Turnpike Road, I'm sorry, the Arrive district, right?
Yeah.
Unicapacity is 599, there's actually well more than that because of the height of the buildings.
Yeah.
So it really doesn't matter what's there already. It matters, if it were a vacant lot, what could be built?
Got it.
So if all three of these lots were vacant, they could be, all three of these lots, all three of these districts were vacant, they could be built out with 1,572 units. And again, if somebody wanted vacant, they would have the right to do that.
Right.
With just site plan review.
We looked at a few different areas and, as I'm sure you know, John, looking at Hopkington, it's difficult to do the math and you can't really get to that exact number based on all the parameters that they give you. But I think, I think it's a comfortable place to be for this. And like I said, we'll continue to look at other options in the zoning.
So I know, no other questions, I know that our plan was to continue this. So Hazel could have any comments and vote on it at the next meeting. Is everyone here next, on the 20th? Motion?
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the zoning article entitled, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District until February 20th, 2024, meeting date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? That's four to zero in favor. Next item on the agenda, we have a direct, director of planning, updates, Jenny, anything?
So we did have our kickoff meeting with our downtown development plan consultant last week. I think it was last week. And so it's really exciting, they did take a look at the downtown and they're starting to do interviews of stakeholders, different businesses in town. So they will be scheduling a public meeting, I believe, in March. They want to do a scavenger hunt downtown and promote it so that people go out and they find things that they may have never noticed in the downtown area and then come and give feedback to them. So we're working on that. The other project that I'm working on right now is the housing production plan. So we hired VHB, who did our master plan, to assist with the development of a housing production plan, which will look at the demographics in Westboro and the projections over the next five years of what type of housing that is needed, senior housing or family housing, and then any areas of potential that we can see as a town for development of housing. MBTA zoning is the other thing I'm working on, obviously. And I believe that's it.
All right. Reports of board members on town committees and CMR PC. So I can report that we're still working, we have an article, Open Space Committee has an article on the town meeting warrant to purchase 30-plus acres on Bowman Street, contingent upon receiving a grant from the state as well as funding from Sudbury Valley Trustee. That would leave the town with relatively small number. We don't know exactly until we get the appraisal, but it'd be one-fifth of the acquisition price, basically. Trust, which raises an appropriate article or any borrowing involved. So I think that's moving forward, there's an information session on that on the 27th at 7:00 PM. Lots more info on that before town meeting. Other than that, Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee, we're putting together, basically, the town funded, the town agreed to fund engineering company to put together a bid package. So we know we need to do work there, but we have to get an engineer to create a, I guess, scope of work before we can actually hire a company to do the work. And because all, all of it has to be approved by EPA, we have to get, a plan that we can submit to EPA as well as go out for bid to get the work done. That's where we're at now, we're trying to get an engineer to put all that together. Moving much slower than I would like on that, I'd love to get that over. I think there's a couple of warrant articles on accepting easements from Amazon. That's exciting to me, so, I don't know, I guess that's it.
Yeah, I remembered one more thing. On March 16th, I'm participating in the Climate Action Fair that Sustainable Westboro is hosting. And I'm having a sustainability and planning table. So if anybody wants to join me to talk about sustainability and planning, you're welcome to. And, yeah, it's on March 16th.
Okay. Did we have meeting minutes? Remember.
From January 9th, yes.
Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes from January 9th?
I did.
Any changes, comments? Motion on that?
Copy of the motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 9th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four to zero. Upcoming meeting dates, we have February 20th and then we have to skip, skip to March 19th because of, first Tuesday in March is primaries and the second Tuesday is the town election. Why, we couldn't do those on the same day? I could have those backwards to it.
No, I believe that's correct.
I believe there's also gonna be a candidate's night on March 3rd. Not 100% sure of that, but I do know. I am, yeah.
And town meeting is March 23rd, it's a Saturday.
So John, I'll ask for your vote after the meeting, because I'm not supposed to do that at a public meeting.
Are you running against anyone?
No.
There you go.
Thank goodness.
And like $500 on signs?
No, I still have my signs from when I first ran. We're getting sidetracked, any other business? Want a motion?
I move we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? That's four to zero in favor.